Recording here. Wonderful. Okay, my name is Amanda Venatmil. I am an organizer with Ninety Two County Strategy. Tonight, we are having our activist hour number four in the series, and this is regarding county council. So with us tonight, we will have a couple of county council members around the state of Indiana, and they will be answering questions, giving us information, and hoping to inspire you to get involved locally. Now, here a little bit about Ninety Two County Strategy. We do advocate for progress through civic education. One of the things that I noticed going around the state, trying to get information to people about different issues that were going on, is a lot of people didn't know who their elected officials were, what those offices were, or what they did. Everybody can tell you what a senator does. Not many people know what a township trustee or county council member does. So through no costs and no distance barriers, we do give this information freely, and we do hope that people learn from it and can use it and also share it. We encourage political involvement for many progressive activists. Hopefully, people that have been involved recently in the political process will be inspired and go ahead and learn for something. This organization is completely made up of volunteers and activists from across the state of Indiana. And this is our first event, our first project, our activist hour webinar series. So you can go on our website, you can go to IN92.org, and you can go to the archives, and you can see our previous webinars, and you'll be able to see this one within the next day or two. Tonight, our guest panelists are Mike Jones of Switzerland County and Jerry Jansen of Noble County. We have Jerry on the phone here with us. We're hoping Mike joins in shortly. We were at an event just a little bit ago. So hopefully, we'll see him come in here soon. We'll go ahead and get started tonight. The first thing I'd like to do is ask Jerry to go ahead and introduce himself. Jerry, thanks for joining us tonight. If you could tell us just a little bit about yourself and kind of where you're located and what you do as a county council person.
Well, thank you for inviting me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to share anything I might be able to help people in their decisions to become involved with their counties, with their states. This is a very, very important thing. It's a way of community service, getting involved and staying involved. County council allows one to get a true, full grasp of how the structure of the county works, as well as how the county is managed, how different departments work within a county, how it relates to the state. And it's just, it's a great opportunity, and that's why it's easy to share this kind of information. Personally, I'm a chiropractic physician, acupuncturist in Kenneville, Indiana, the northeast part of the state. I've been in practice for thirty years. Yes, I'm very old. With that said, I totally have been a community service person from the very beginnings of being a Boy Scout to working with, coming back into the community after graduation, the community where I grew up, being involved with United Way, the J.C.'s organization early on. I've been involved in our local YMCA, and the list goes on and on. Just a very much committed person. My background and how I got into the whole political arena is pretty straightforward. My father was a city councilman for sixteen years. We've been around politics and that and have known many of the people that are involved in Indiana state politics through the years, through my mother and my father, through their active activities. In, at some point in my, my time here, my daughter graduated from high school, went on to college, and at that, I messed around with some things for a little while, and just something was empty, and the idea of running for the county council came up. That's, that's where I started, and that was in two thousand.
Okay, so you've actually, so you've had a lot of experience with this. Now, you said that you're also a chiropractor. So how much time do you spend per week or per month on the job of being a county council member?
There are members on a county council that, that spend three and a half to four hours a month in one meeting a month, because that's what we have in Noble County. I'm not one of those people. I tend to spend, and I don't, I want to make it really clear. You can put as much time into this as you want to put into this thing. I, I don't have an exact amount. I tend to be the one that goes to extra meetings and things. There are some responsibilities that they assign through a county council, to be representatives perhaps on a local economic development corporation, to be involved with the local emergency management group, to be involved in a, the different types of board, the park board, other things around, that they do assign those kind of jobs or you volunteer, if you will. So that can be extra hours in a month. Right now, I'm down to just doing the emergency planning group, and I think that's probably about an hour every three months. And there are some other meetings. I know, it's not, some things are really involved. Well, again, Noble County Economic Development Corporation, that's probably a two and a half hour meeting, maybe. So some of these extra things, and it's things that, there are a couple of extra things. But county council itself, our meetings are just once a month. I believe they should be twice. Our meetings last somewhere between two hours and sometimes three and a half hours. That is the, that is a monthly meeting in Noble County. There, the other time of year that is actually busy, the time of year that is actually busy is during budget hearing times. That's when all the departments and there are quite a number of departments in the twenties come before the council and present the budgets they'd like to see. The council then crunches the numbers, and says, "This is what we can see happen for this year." That is, in essence, what the county council does. It is the fiscal body of the community, of the county. Whereas commissioners, and I don't know if you, Amanda, have discussed commissioners yet, but the commissioners, they are truly the functional head of the county. They're out deciding how the highway department is doing. They're looking over the whole body. They arrange all contracts, the commissioners do. The council may give a yea or nay whether a contract is a good idea, but ultimately, the commissioners take care of that type of thing. We really work on the money and on the fiscal end.
Okay. So it's safe to say, so from what I understand, the county council people, the county commissioners decide what they want to do, and then county council pretty much tells them what they can feasibly do?
With, from a financial standpoint. There are some funds within the county, and I can explain some of that if you'd like to, how the funding works and how a county functions in that way, if you want me to digress into that. The idea is, is that we hold the purse strings. We set the salary ordinances for the different office holders, as well as the employees throughout the county. We're, we're in charge of that.
Oh, well, that actually kind of leads, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, please.
Well, actually, that, that kind of led me into one of my other questions that I wanted to ask you tonight. And let me pause real quick. I don't want to interrupt you, but I do believe we had another caller. Mike, is that you?
Yeah, Mike Jones. I just got on.
Okay, hey, Mike, we're talking to Jerry, and I'm going to ask him just a couple more questions, and then I'll introduce you and ask you the same things, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
All right, wonderful. Okay, Jerry, going back to that, you said that, so you set the salaries. So what is the salary, if you don't mind sharing, for a county council member in Noble County?
That varies from county to county. And in Noble County, it's eight thousand dollars per year.
Okay, okay.
Which is pretty significant, in my, from my volunteer standpoint. That's fairly significant.
Oh, yeah.
Also allows access to insurance.
Oh, that's nice.
Exactly. I did not know that when I ran for office. I, I'm not, I'm a physician. The, the money part of it, it didn't exactly enter into it to me. And I mean that respectfully when I say that. I didn't even know it was a paid position when I agreed to do it. I, I was pretty naive on those types of things. And, yeah, and I, again, but the idea is, is that some counties pay more than that, some less than that. We have not given ourselves a raise since two thousand and eight. The first year on, it was, you know, the two thousand and nine was the first active year. Two thousand and eight was the election, two thousand and nine started in January. And it just, it wasn't a good time. It was the recession, the worst of it. And it just wasn't a good time for raises. And, I mean, we had a county council person sit back one time and said, "Well, if we have more than one county meeting a month, I'm going to have to have a raise." And it's like, seriously? You know, there are different people, I have different motivations. I consider this a community service. And, and with that, I really try to stay right with that idea.
That's great. That, that's something that we, we really are trying to get across to people with these webinars. You know, we're trying to teach people that elected officials are just, the only way they're different from you and I is that they feel a calling to serve their community, and they take up the opportunity. That, that's really the only difference.
That's a very good way to put it, too, Amanda. You know, the thing is, is that there was a council member with, had been a commissioner, became a council member. And, and he'd done twelve years as a commissioner. And then he became a council member. He still wanted to serve, and he made the comment one time that, no, he said, "I did not go into the military, and I really feel that serving my community like this is my, the part that I, at least I can do." And I've kind of hung on to that, you know? That different people have different motivations, but that altruistic attitude is really, it, it's not, it's, it's important. It is important. It's not, somebody's not trying to be coy or something like that. I think they're sincere when they come out with those things, for the most part. That is probably the majority of council people, seriously.
So from what I'm gathering, what you probably like best about the job is serving your community, but could you give me something else you really enjoy that people might not think of when it comes to county council? And then conversely, also give me something that you don't really like about, about the job?
I am a fairly political person, but I don't, I am a fairly political person. I wanted, I do not care for sitting around a table and talking about taxes this and taxes that. You cannot talk about something unless you understand it. My objective in joining county council was to understand how the tax structure really works.
Okay.
And so how it starts, how you assess a county, you assess your citizens for property tax, and how you determine that rate, and then how that turns around and how it goes through the, you know, through the auditor's office, and then how the treasurer collects the taxes, that type of thing, and, and.
That's how I think about things, that's funny.
Yeah, well, that's how we do it. And, and that, I wanted to find out, I want to know how it works, and I want to get involved in the process. My dislikes are probably the process itself. And the one thing that you run into is, is that we need people's, people that want to be actively involved, not people just to show up for a meeting. And people that really want to study the figures, try to understand them. And that is something that, that when you get involved, get involved. You know, if you, it is a commitment. And you ask about number of hours a week. You know, there's some hours, there are some times when I spend quite a few hours at this. But it is, you know, again, it's never more than ten or twelve hours a week, ever. You know, I go to some meetings and things at some, some Association of Indiana County meetings. That's an interesting thought, too, is everybody's discussing this. You know, there is an Association of Indiana Counties, and there is training for this position. They go in and they explain what the different, different people do as elected officials, and what your responsible, the county responsibilities as a county council person are. And those meetings are very helpful. As much as the meeting content, it's the networking that goes with it to find out, "Hey, we're having this problem, what do you think?" So I try to go to at least, at least their annual main meeting, but I try to hit a couple more of the local ones here also. So there's some things like that. It's how much you want to get involved. If you do decide to get involved, get it, be sure that you want to be involved. It's not just a cursory, once a month meeting and a little bit at a budget hearing time. There's more truth than that to be fully informed and fully engaged.
So, did you, well, let's, I'll tell you what, I'll come back to that. Let me get, let me get to Mike here. I'm going to give you a break. And Mike, thank you for joining us tonight. I did make some apologies for you in the beginning, because I know we were both out doing some other things this evening. So Mike is from Switzerland County. Worked with him in the past on some different things. He's a good guy. And he agreed to come and, and speak basically about the other half of the state and, and maybe try and find some differences in how county council might be a little different in Switzerland County than Noble County. So thanks for joining us, Mike. And if you could, just tell, tell everybody a little bit about yourself and just a little bit about kind of what you do in Switzerland County.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I lived in Switzerland County all of my life. I got elected to the county council when I was twenty, twenty-four, and I served thirty-two years on the council, including thirty, the last thirty years. I was on the council two years, and of course, back then, most of the members on the county council were, were farmers, older guys. I was twenty-four. After I was on the council two years, the, the president of the council told me one day that he was gonna step down and wanted me, council wanted me to become president. I became president, and I was president for the next thirty years.
Wow.
And I, I was on the council from nineteen eighty-two to two thousand and fourteen, and I became a school superintendent, which took a lot more of my time. So I kind of started to, to phase out that part. But I, you know, being president for thirty years, I, I loved, I loved the council. I, I, I saw it. I would agree with everything that, was it Jerry?
Yes.
Said as far as, as how the council works. I, I guess the other thing that I would say as a councilman for thirty-two years is that, you know, a lot of times, people out in the public, they get issues. They'll come to you with it, they really don't know who to come to, and they'll come to you. And I found myself being a liaison a lot of times with state government and even the federal government, trying to help people work through problems that they had. I enjoyed the county council. I guess the thing, the thing that, the last few years I was on the council, the thing that I probably didn't enjoy was that unfortunately, the, what I would say, the divisive, vitriol part of politics that we only used to see on the federal and state level started kind of coming into the local level. And I, you know, my theory always was, you, you run for the office, you get elected, and then politics really, for many, many years, never played a part of it. You, you were just there to serve the people and, and to try to make decisions that were fair and equitable to everyone. And that's, that's, I guess that's what I enjoyed. And I enjoyed, as Jerry said, being a part of the Association of Indiana County. I enjoyed going to the legislature and lobbying, talking about issues that were important for county government. And even though I'm not on the county council anymore, my, my heart is definitely still there.
That's really wonderful. So how much does your time, because I know Noble County is, I believe, a little bit more populous than Switzerland County. So how much time do you spend, or did you spend as the president of county council in Switzerland County?
I would agree with Jerry. I mean, I, I think the, the size of your county has impact, but you still, you're still responsible for the same kinds of things. And I think as president of county council, I, we had our, our monthly meetings. We had our special meetings. We also had joint meetings with the county commissioners. We would do that sometimes once a month, sometime every other month. You also found yourself being brought into, to other issues. So I would agree with Jerry. I'd probably average anywhere from ten to twelve hours a week. Now, one thing that I did go through, in nineteen ninety-three, Switzerland County, we passed a riverboat gaming referendum. And the, and that, we, we didn't have a city. There's, there's no city. Our county seat is Zee, which is a pound. So under the statute, it all fell to the county council. So from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-eight, I was in charge of, of the efforts to, you know, I decided early on that I was going to support getting a, a gaming license in Switzerland County. And, and I would say for five years, I probably, some, some weeks would put in maybe, maybe as many as twenty, twenty to twenty-four hours a week. I did, I was responsible for the hearings, presentations in Indianapolis and that. So, you know, sometimes you get into issues like that that take more of your time. And, you know, the other thing about being a county council person, I think Jerry would agree that, you know, it could be, it's not like it's, you meet once a month on a Wednesday at six P.M. I mean, your time can be needed in the morning, in the evening, in the afternoon. It's a, it's, it's, in many ways, it's part-time, but your responsibilities are really full-time.
Makes sense, makes sense.
May I weigh in on that a little bit?
Please.
Yes, okay. Mike, you, you make a very good point with that. We do have county member, council members that probably do very little more than their monthly meeting.
I would agree.
Majority of them, but a couple. And, you know, I'm a physician, so I have scheduled hours. And, you know, I, I have a sense of responsibility in my life. You know, you start out with, you know, your, your family and your God and your, you can put these whatever order you want. But my practice, it comes before my community involvement. And it happens, because it's not, and that's exactly right, your business. And so my hours are not all that flexible. I try not to, they've been very gracious. Our meetings are Monday, and I take that afternoon. Actually, I'll go back and see patients in the evening. I'm kind of clutching for that. But with that said, the, I know, I'm just, sorry, I am. The, but how it works is, is that if, I have Wednesdays out of the office. And so like, if they're going to do department head meeting, they've been gracious and put those on Wednesdays. We've had to have meetings some for salary committees and job classification committees. We do that oftentimes on Wednesdays. They do that to accommodate me. There are people that are a lot more flexible in their schedules than I am. And, and that, that's worked out very well. As far as partisanship goes, Mike, I, I know things have become a little more vitriol, to use your word, I, through the years, but not on our council, it hasn't. I'm the only elected Democrat. It's a long story, and, but we're just, we are a very red county. And we have forty-seven thousand people in the county, so it's nearly five times larger than Switzerland County. We have two hundred and thirty-plus employees. Our annual general fund budget's about twelve million dollars, and then there are budgets aside from that. It's, there's a lot going on. And, oh, because I'm a Democrat, I don't think I'll ever be the president of council, nor necessarily do I aspire to be. You obviously took your job very seriously while you were there, and I've seen that. I've seen council members, presidents particularly, tell me that they go in and check the treasurer's office to see what the checkbook balance is. And we don't, I'm not going to say we don't watch it close, but we don't quite, nobody on our council puts their nose quite that far into it.
Right, right. Well, that's really, now, oh, also, Mike, I was curious. Now, Jerry said that in Noble County, it's eight thousand dollars a year. So what do you, what do you make in Switzerland County for county council? Or what did you when you were a part of council?
Switzerland County was about seventy-seven to seventy-eight hundred a year at that time. So, so pretty close.
Okay.
But, yeah, so probably, I'm guessing it's probably around eight thousand now.
Okay. So now, Mike, you said that you're also a school superintendent. Now, you had mentioned you were both at the same time for a little while, is that correct?
That's correct. And I've also, I've always been somebody that's been busy. I've also been the pastor of a church for eighteen years. So I, you know, I'm just, my whole life kind of, I guess you would say, serving the public. But yes, I was a superintendent and on the council for the first, I guess, two years that I was superintendent.
So did you?
And then I was a secretary for many years.
Right. So did you find, like Jerry, that they were willing to work with you on being able to get to the, the meetings?
Oh, yeah.
And is it, is it a pretty congenial thing? Everybody's like, "Okay, well, we have something to do this day, this day, can we all get together?"
Absolutely. And, and you know, there were, there were other committees that people served on, and, and the guys or the ladies, the men that, that I served with, they would, if maybe somebody that was free to go during a day would take that assignment. Yeah, I did, I don't think I ever, when I first went on the council, budget hearings, they had just historically, and Jerry knows, those are probably some of your busiest times. They would always have the Tuesday and Wednesday after Labor Day. Well, as a teacher, I had to take personal days those days. But they kind of went away from that now. Most of those are done in, in afternoon sessions. Back then, we would take two full days. Every county office would personally come before us with their budget and make a case as to why we should approve, you know, their budget as was submitted. And we would go through every line item. It was pretty exhaustive. But now, as I said, most of that, most of those now are done in, in afternoon, late afternoon sessions instead of all day.
We're still all day in Noble, and we plan two to three days to do it. And it is very exhausting for people. It's, it's pretty interesting. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still doing all-day type things.
Okay, well, so I only have, our, our webinars only last about an hour, so I do have three more questions for each of you. So we'll start out, the first thing I would like to know is, when you campaigned, when you were elected, how did you go about that? Did you knock on doors? Did you run a traditional campaign? Was it very small? If you could each, Jerry, we'll start with you. If you could describe how you went about being elected to your position and what you had to do to get that done?
Well, I, I knew people that were political. I met the Democrat Party people in Noble County. You take somebody like a, like a Carmen Darlin, that understands all the voter lists and things that are available, and how you can go door to door. We had a lot of Democrat candidates at the time. My first seat was an at-large seat in oh-eight. It was pretty neat. We went all over the county, and we did all the parades, and we took likely voters, likely Democrats, and, and, you know, what uncertain, and we would knock on those doors. We did a lot of canvassing and had a lot of help from all the candidates that were involved. And we pretty much had a, pretty much a full slate back in those days, two thousand and eight. In two thousand and twelve, I, and it's true, sometimes people become complacent. We still did all the parades in two thousand and twelve, and we knocked on quite a few doors. In two thousand and twelve, I, and I always say that I wrote President, I wrote President Obama's hotels in oh-eight. In two thousand and twelve, I was not reelected. It was an at-large seat, and the three Republicans, remember, an at-large seat. There, there are seven county council seats. Three of them are at-large, and four of them are districted. In two thousand and twelve, I have to be careful how I say this. Lucifer could have run in two thousand and twelve and been elected in Noble County on the Republican side. Uh-huh, exactly. It was really bad. And, and, and I remember my wife, we're at the courthouse waiting, waiting results, which the Democrats, Republicans kind of get together there and kind of listen to the results come in. And she goes, and we, I heard the first couple very, very hardcore red areas come in, and I said, "We lost." And she goes, "Well, no, that's that area." I said, "No." I had percentages in those areas the first year. And the point is, is what happened in two thousand and twelve, a good friend of mine, who was president of our council, Mike, you'll appreciate that, he passed away of a heart attack. And he was the only other elected Democrat, and he had a districted seat. So that took me through two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and fourteen, the Republicans, they say they didn't put anybody up against me. I've been told they couldn't find anybody. I've also been told they didn't, they didn't put anybody against me. They were shocked when I was not reelected in two thousand and twelve, because, and I'm not going to say I was the only active person on the council, but I was the one that got communications going within the council, started to have department head meetings again and things. So people could voice, "Mike, I think your commissioners and council meetings once a month or so is a fabulous thing." We've never gotten to that point. There's a fear of being together and communicating. I think sometimes it's a horrible thing. So I've been really trying to look on communication. So anyway, so that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at with it. So that's how, but we, we went with the Democrats. You go, you walk with the Democrats. I have motorcycle buddies. We do have vintage motorcycles. And I have six or eight of my buddies. We'd ride these vintage motorcycles in the parades to get noticed, wear, you know, Jansen for Council T-shirts. Although we're part of the Democrat group, not focused on the Democrats. Yeah, so that's how, that's how it works, Amanda. I mean, you've, you've got to get involved.
Right.
And now that you can, I've seen way too many times, "Oh, I want to run for that." And people show up with a few T-shirts and walk in a parade. and people show up with a few t-shirts and walk in a parade, and don't do anything more than that, and it's not effective. You've gotta go out and knock on some doors, you've gotta speak with people. Now, I'm in a districted seat, and I have to tell you, this part of the county knows my, me very, very well. And do it, well, if I decide to run again in eighteen, do I have to get out and knock on doors? Yes.
Right.
I've seen the best.
Right, I'm, I'm a door-knocking advocate. I, anybody, I won't work for a candidate that won't knock doors. E- e- every candidate I've ever, I've ever worked with, if you won't knock doors with me, you'll get me to work for you one time to find out you don't knock doors, and that'll be the last time. Because it is the, in my personal opinion, the most important part.
So, Mike, how are you with that? Like, I'm a real social person. I like knocking on doors.
Yeah, and me too. Uh, I, uh, came into it, uh, my grandfather had been elected official for, uh, forty years here in Switzerland County, and I had just got out of college, and he was on the county council, and unfortunately, he died very suddenly. And I, I was also, I had just been elected, I, I guess, I could share, I was also the county Democratic chairman, which being a chairman and a candidate is definitely a challenge also. In fact, in many ways, I, I wouldn't recommend it, even though I did it for many years. But, uh, my, my, uh, I was much like Jerry, I, I, I had a district seat, so I wasn't at-large, but of course, being a county chairman, I was involved in all the other races. But I, uh, my plan, every time I ran, I was elected eight times, and I knocked on every door in my district. I, uh, I had, uh, usually I would have some kind of a little, uh, event at my house, uh, when I announced, and I would, uh, uh, knock on every door, of course, identify my voters. Uh, you know, my grandfather, of course, he was in this before, before they had computers, and, and I just remember as a kid, he would have these legal pads, and he would have these names on there with checkmarks at the end of election day, and what he would do in his district, he would go through and list every person that he knew if they voted, they would be one of his voters. And he made a list, and he personally saw every one of them, made sure they got right to the polls, uh, that thing. And I, I was very much a, uh, uh, grassroots, knock-on-door, uh, in fact, I remember there was an, uh, elderly lady who's deceased now that lived in Patriot, the little town that I live in, and she would, she would always, she would like take a thumbtack and pack every person that came to her house to ask for her vote, and when she would go to the polls, uh, that's who she would vote for, was the people that took the time to come see her. So, I was also very much, I'm a big believer in retail, retail politics.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I like that. Can you, I, I believe in that as well, but can you, can you just give a quick one or two sentences, explain what that means to people that maybe not heard it before?
I think retail politics is, you know, uh, I always felt like as a candidate, I was like a, in many ways, like a salesman, and I was, I was, in a sense, selling myself as a candidate. Well, my idea was, you get your name out there, you knock on doors, you identify your voters, you, uh, you, as Jerry said, you go to the parades, you, uh, we used to, uh, a friend of mine was on the council, we would come to every little town in, in the district, and we would, we fixed the float like it would be in a parade, and we would announce that we were gonna be in, in Patriot on, let's say, Wednesday from five to eight, and we would take that float around. We had, we had candy there, we had food, we had a grill, you know, it was all about going out and seeing people pressing the flesh, uh, letting them, letting them know that, yes, you're running, and you care enough about them to come talk to them, to get their, uh, to shake their hand, to, to listen to their concerns. Uh, it's just, it's kind of like, uh, uh, selling a brand as a, uh, as a business, or, or the doctor there that, you know, you, you, uh, now, once you're in practice for a while, your name gets out there, and patients talk, but, uh, retail politics, uh, selling your, your brand, I would call it.
Right, and, and for me, it, it even goes a little deeper, because I, I'm, I'm a huge customer service person. Like, to me, customer service is the utmost important thing in any business, so you have people coming back to you. So, not only are you selling yourself with retail politics, you have to keep in mind that you want them to come back, you want repeat customers, you know? So, you have to keep up on the other end, more than just shaking their hand before the election, you also have to...
And it's, it's, uh, it, it's, it, it's a, right, it's a continual, it's a, it's gonna be successful at it, uh, it, the people, if you only come around every four years, they catch on to that pretty quick. Uh, they wanna see you, they want, they want, when they call you, they want you to return a phone call, uh, they want, they wanna see you in public, and you have to be, uh, you're right, you, it, it can't be just every four years. It has to be really, uh, uh, continual.
Right. Now, we do have, I, I do have a couple other questions I want you to, but one of the features that we have doing these webinars is that if people that attend online, they're able to follow along with our, uh, presentations, and then they can also drop questions in a chat that we have available to them. And I've had a question come through. Uh, Mike, we'll have you answer this one first, and then Jerry, if you could follow up. How much did you spend or raise when you ran for office? Now, Mike, I know your initial run was quite a while ago, but what would, what do you see people, because you're obviously still pretty heavily involved, what, what do you see right now going toward the county council rate?
Well, I mean, you know, you can, as Jerry knows, you can, uh, you can do very little or you can do a lot. When I ran, um, I had a district, but I generally would probably spend, and again, Switzerland County's a very rural, we have a weekly newspaper, I think one radio station, uh, but I, I would say I would probably still spend, uh, anywhere between thirty-five hundred to five thousand dollars, maybe, maybe closer to five the last few times I ran, that would be my guess.
Okay, and Jerry, what do you, what, uh, how, about how much do you put in? Did you, so, so you were re-elected just last year, so what did it take you to get re-elected?
Um, well, again, I had no competition, and so, all the science that I built that first year, oh, yeah, I did have to be that fair a question, too. Um, and I grabbed my checkbook from two thousand and eight, just as you asked that question. So, just real, give just a second here, because I had...
You can tell he's one of the money guys. He still has the two thousand and eight checkbook.
Well, I know, I'm gonna be honest, I know where my wife keeps it. She's my, she is my, uh, campaign treasure, which you need to designate somebody, and you have filing time guidelines and things, where you have to give a report on your finances, and there are several times through the campaign you have to do that, so you keep track of, oh, yeah, she's a, she's a riot. So, I'm, I'm, um, she's sad. Um, um, I'm, I, individual, my, uh, my mother donated two hundred dollars, how about that? Um, she, the, um, you always go to moms. Um, the, um, I probably have a thousand dollars in don, no, I probably have about fifteen hundred dollars in donations that first year, okay? And that includes, um, for, um, you know, signage and things like that. I did some big four-by-sheets of plywood and printed them up, and had those around the county. I knew enough people that you just, you know, Janson County Council, that type thing. Again, it was an at-large seat. Um, and, and I will be, and I put those up in two thousand and twelve also, the year that I lost. And I, in all fairness to people running, I did not do as much door-to-door in twelve as what I should have done. I don't know that would make a difference in twelve. It is gonna make a difference now. People are looking for, you know, they're gonna look again, and that's what happened in two thousand and eight. People were looking, and...
Yeah.
And it, it worked. They, they found, they went for Democrat. Um, I do have a family name, I've got six brothers, uh, five of us in total live locally, uh, and everybody's a physician but one, dentist and chiropractor and such. Yeah, so there's a lot of name-merkiness around here, but you get yourself out there, and what are you gonna run, you know, what, what platform are you gonna run on? You know, fiscal responsibility, well, everybody does that, but you know, I think you, you work with what works for you. People know your honesty, it's your honesty, and that, that's how you're approaching this thing. Uh, you're a new look, more objectivity. Um, so when you talk to money, I, my, I probably about fifteen hundred dollars, and, and then they have gone to a couple three thousand, uh, total, uh, and that was in oh-eight, and twelve really doesn't count, fourteen didn't count, there was no way against me. Um, that was too easy. Um, and what we're gonna do this time, um, we will, uh, if, but we will be campaigning actively.
Right. Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is generally anywhere from, let's say, two to five thousand is, is a good estimate.
That's fair.
Okay. So, real quickly, um, I do still have a couple more questions for you guys, but I wanted to go over a couple of things. If you're joining us online on our online presentation, you'll notice right now you have some codes, Indiana codes for county council. Three specifically, they're very important, uh, to run for county council. You do have to have lived in your county for one year prior to the election, and you actually have to be in the district you're running for for at least six months. You also are not qualified to run for local office unless you're registered to vote in the district you live in, and you have to have that done before you, the deadline to declare for your candidacy. And then the last thing that's really important is that a person is disqualified from assuming or being a candidate for office for ethics, uh, such as like accepting bribes, things like that, or if you've been convicted of a felony. So, there are specifics referenced in that code specifically. You can access this, um, later on in our website in our archives, and you'll be able to pull up those code numbers specifically for, for the research. So, uh, it, not a whole lot left here. Um, I do want you to be able to go online. You can go to the Gateway for Government Unit, uh, it's gateway dot I F I online dot org. Um, and if you'll notice here on our website, we do have an option where you can go and click the Public Employee Compensation link. So, you're gonna click that, and when you do, you're going to find the ability to click on Employment Compensation specifically. And you can go in there, and when that pulls up for you, you're gonna be able to look and see exactly how much different people, different elected officials in your community make. It's not just gonna be county council, it's gonna be a lot of different types of representatives. So, you can find out a little bit where your money's going, even if you don't decide to run for office. Now, to run for county council, you're gonna have to file a CANTO form, which is in January twenty eighteen, that'll be due. They're not published yet, but they will be soon. As soon as we start seeing forms come up, we'll be sure to get some of those on the website, so you know they're being published. You're also gonna want to talk to your county clerk about campaign finance filing, and then if you do claim a party affiliation, you either have to vote with your most recent primary vote, or the county chairman of, chairman of a different party has to certify that you're a party member. So, say for whatever reason, last year you voted Republican in the primary, but you're really a Democrat, you would actually have to go to the Democratic county chairman to get a, to get a form stating that you are in fact a Democrat, so you can run on a Democratic ticket. As always, here at Ninety-two County Strategies, we are nonpartisan, we are focused on progress. So, whatever party you decide to run for, please make sure you go to that party chair as well and ask any other questions you may have. Um, if you have questions about tonight's presentation, you can always email those to ninety-two-county@gmail.com, and even after the fact, if you have a question later on, you're watching this, you can always send us a line anytime, we'll be happy to answer that. So, as we finish up, I would just like to ask each of you to tell me one story, something that, that really will help, that people will remember, something that will stick out to them and maybe call to them, to make them wanna run for office. So, uh, Mike, we'll start with you this time. If you could just tell me one story about something that happened during your time as a county council member or president, that really exemplifies the reasons that you feel like other people should run for this office?
Well, I, I don't know that I can give one time, but, but I think for me, uh, the satisfaction that I get, uh, from having served on the council is when I see people or, you know, to me, I got into public service because I wanted to help people. And for me, I guess, the story would be, um, uh, when I see people or when I have people come to me and say, you know, Mike, uh, you helped, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. Uh, Patriot had had a struggling, um, a little area that everybody thought would make a, a nice, uh, a nice park, and, uh, boat, place the launch of boat, we're right on the Ohio River, and I worked on this for several years, and we were finally able to get the money to put in a park which included, uh, a walking trail, because we really didn't have anything like that around here. And, and I think that would be an example, just, uh, things where I can drive around and I can see something, and I can say, you know, I had a part in that. I, uh, I had a part in making somebody's life a little better or improving their quality of life. That, that would be my, uh, plug.
That's great. That's, that's exactly why I, I, I do a lot of the things I do, it's about helping people and getting back to the basics, and just making sure we're taking care of everybody. So, I, I love that that, that is your reasoning. Jerry, what do you, what, do you have a story or something that comes to your mind that could, could really call someone in to wanna be a county council member?
I look at everything as personal growth, and I think that's what our life, our, you know, that's what we do, is we, we, you grow personally with, through your involvement. You are giving back to your community, um, you're helping people that, um, that are your friends, your neighbors, by being involved. And that's why I, and as a candidate, as a, as a council person eventually, that's what you're doing, is you're helping the people around you. Mike's right on that. I just look at the whole thing as personal growth. Um, I, my exposure to Economic Development Corporation, wow, you know, to get, be in there with, to help it make some of these decisions that, to make the, help the community grow, help it maintain itself. Um, when you look at the ec, the Emergency Planning Group that you get involved with, some of these peripheral groups, um, as far as the whole county as a whole, I just like the fact that there's more, I believe more communication going on. I like to think I helped foster that.
That's really great. That, that's so great. Guys, I really wanna thank you for coming out tonight, taking time during the week. I know it's busy, summer vacation and everything. I just really appreciate it. What we're trying to do here at Ninety-two County Strategy is just help everyday folks realize that these offices are occupied by everyday folks. That's, that's the most important thing I feel like we can do, is, is teach people not only what these offices are, but, you know, a lot of people are scared to come up and talk to their mayor, or go up and talk to their county councilman. It feels like this exalted thing that's almost unattainable, and hopefully, through these webinars and conversations that we've had previously and will continue to have, people will start realizing that it's just about if your heart is in the right place. Who you are, where you came from, that's not nearly as important as if you're honest and your heart is in the right place. So, I really appreciate you guys coming out tonight, and, uh, would you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, one thing I'd like to say, I guess, my parting words to anybody that's listening or watching this, whether you decide to run for office yourself or not, and hopefully you will, one thing I'd like to say as an elected official, um, go to your meetings as, as a, as a citizen, attend county council meetings, town board, because I can say as a councilman for thirty-two years, when a group of people come and voice their, voice their opinion on an issue, uh, elected officials take note, and that's, uh, uh, that's no truer anywhere than on the local level. Uh, so, get involved, know who your people are, and, and voice your opinion, because, uh, you know, when Jimmy Carter left the presidency, he said that he was getting ready to assume the only office, uh, greater than that of president, and that's of a, a private citizen. And we don't realize how much power we have until we come together and, and, uh, and voice our concerns.
Absolutely. Jerry, did you have anything else to add?
But again, get involved, um, get involved in your local Democrat group, um, at, at some capacity, um, do be looking out, um, for this future, you know, through this year and this opportunity. Go to some council meetings, see what they're about, get a feel for it, you run. Uh, you'll, you'll find, you'll be surprised. It is, there, there are everyday people and functioning as a group, and overall, things function quite well also, especially the people I talk to. It's an opportunity, it's an opportunity to grow personally and opportunity to serve.
That's wonderful. All right, guys, well, I think we're gonna wrap it up. That's wonderful. All right, guys, well, I think we're gonna wrap it up just a few minutes early tonight. Uh, again, if anybody has any questions, you can contact us through our website, I N ninety-two dot org, or you can email us, ninety-two counties at gmail dot com. And this archive will be available within the next couple of days on our website. You can go back and look at our old ones. And again, Mike, Jerry, I just, I really want to thank you for taking time and doing this with us tonight, and hopefully, uh, Jerry might talk to you about taking you up on a, a further conversation on structure and function of the financing that you were talking about.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm, I'm a, I'm a top-to-bottom nerd myself, so I may take you up on that.
That's what we do. Very good.
All right, well, gentlemen, you have a great night, and thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
And thank you to, and everyone that joined us tonight, and anybody watching, watching after the fact, if you have any questions at all. If you want to go to your county council meeting and you can't find it, email us. I will do the digging and I will help you. So have a great night, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.